Okay.
Well, it's good to have you with me, Martha.
It's good to be here.
I know this is a crazy time of year and there's all sorts of things happening all around us. So I hope that others might be able to join us once we post the recording on the website. We've had several folks who've been doing it like that because I know three o'clock on Wednesday can be a bit of an obscure time to some folks too. So welcome. I thought we could start with a prayer for our 11th study here on the book of Acts. We'll be reading Acts 24, verse 1 through 27, 12. We'll be covering that section. And I have a prayer that, well, I have a book of prayers that I often like to use. This one's called "Prayers Plainly Spoken" by Stanley Howard Wass. And Howard Wass is a kind of an infamous figure at Duke Divinity School. He was, everybody called him the foul-mouthed theologian because he would, it was nothing for him to drop 10 or 12 cuss words in the course of a lecture.
Oh, my gosh.
So anyway, he always writes down his prayers and he would always begin class with a prayer that he had written out. And so these have been collected through the years and got published several years back. And they're very plainly spoken. He's from Texas and if you remember Ross Perot, he sounds kinda like Ross Perot. He kinda sounds like this real lazily. So I thought I would start with one of his prayers. This one, he's titled "God, Could You Leave Us Alone?" So let's pray. "Zealous God, we confess like your people, Israel, that we tire of being the chosen. Could you not just leave us alone every once in a while? Sometimes this Christian stuff gets a bit much. Life goes on and we have lives to live, yet unrelenting you refuse to leave us alone. You are, after all, a zealous God. You startle us from our reveries to gather us into your dreamtime and to your church. May we thus gathered be so inspired by your Spirit that our lives never tire, that we have the energy now to wait, to rest, and the goodness of your beauty and your truth. Amen."
Amen.
These prayers, he has one where he, his cat had just died and he says, "God, I'm mad at you right now." Stuff like that. So I can appreciate some of those. So in covering this section of Acts, right here towards the end, where next week will be our last session and we'll finish it out at that point. And it'll be a fairly short study as well. This one should be a little shorter than usual also because we have a lot of, this part of the book of Acts is a lot of travel journey narratives. And so even though there might be a lot of stuff happening, it's not really packed full of Christian teaching and stuff like that. That being said, there's some awfully funny stuff if you know a little bit about the history of these Roman officials that are spoken of here in all this. And there's quite a bit of humor and sarcasm that's here in these pages too. It's really pretty fun. So I'll try to inject a little bit of secular history into this and tell you a little bit about King Agrippa and Bernice and all those folks. So I will just start here with chapter 24. Let me share my screen with...
Hey, Reggie. This is you, but you're doing good. Martha, could you call me back when you get a chance? I hate to disturb you again. I need to ask you a question.
Okay, we have it shared now, right? You can see it okay? Yeah, okay. So chapter 24, five days, let me back up and fill us in to where we'd stopped last time. You know, Paul had been in Jerusalem and the folks in Jerusalem were giving him quite the hard time and accused him of all sorts of stuff and he wound up in jail. And then they had plans to ambush him and kill him. And so the Tribune in charge of stuff there hightailed Paul and a whole bunch of troops with him out to Caesarea to keep him safe. And there he was going to be on trial in front of the governor Felix. So that's where we pick up here. Paul is in Caesarea and kind of before Felix. And some folks have come up from Jerusalem who are accusing him of all sorts of stuff that, you know, most of which is not, and you gotta remember, this is a Roman court here. And they're bringing up all sorts of little trivial Jewish theology things against him, which Rome doesn't care about that. You know, Rome cares about making sure that there's peace and not riots. And so of some of the charges that they hurl at Paul, the only ones that the Romans would have really cared about is, you know, being a rebel rouser or starting riots, that sort of thing, or profaning the temple because that would have started a riot had he actually done that. And so, you know, those things Paul cares about. So we get this guy, five days later, the high priest Ananias. Now, this is totally different than the other two Ananias's that have been mentioned previously in the book of Acts. You know, Ananias and Sephira there in chapter 5, who were lying about their gifts to the church. And then Ananias, who helped Paul right after, on the Damascus Road and stuff, right after that experience. So this is a different Ananias altogether. Ananias was a common name. "So five days later, the high priest Ananias came down with some elders and an attorney, a certain Tertullus." I'm glad that's not my name because if I was named Tertullus, I could just see people having a field day with that in elementary school. "And they reported their case against Paul to the governor, Felix. When Paul had been summoned, Tertullus began to accuse him," saying, so it's customary to start off whenever you're addressing the governor or something like that. The rhetorical way of doing it is to always lavish some praise or say something nice to them to start it off on a nice foot, you know? And so we have here all sorts of, and there's really a lot of funny stuff here, like later on, whenever Paul makes his response to it. So we have the prosecuting attorney, so to speak, here with Tertullus accusing Paul of all sorts of stuff. But he starts off talking to Felix like he's the judge, you know? And he says, "Your Excellency, because of you, we have long enjoyed peace and reforms have been made for this people because of your foresight. We welcome this in every way and everywhere with utmost gratitude. But to detain you no further, I beg you to hear us briefly with your customary graciousness." Okay, so he's being, you know, very, very nice. This guy Felix was not all that great of a guy. He was, all of these folks who were mentioned here in this section of Acts had pretty famous reputations for being very licentious and very free with their morals, especially with regards to, you know, relationships with the fairer sex, so to speak. So anyway, so it's kinda funny that Tertullus is lavishing all this praise on this guy Felix, who was in no way deserving of that praise. And so here he says to him in verse 5, "We have in fact found this man a pestilent fellow, an agitator among all the Jews throughout the world, and a ringleader of the sect of the Nazarenes. He even tried to profane the temple, and so we seized him. By examining him yourself, you'll be able to learn from him concerning everything of which we accuse him. The Jews also joined in the charge by asserting that all of this was true. When the governor motioned to him to speak, Paul replied." So here's Paul's response. "I cheerfully make my defense, knowing that for many years you have been a judge over this nation." The only nice thing that he can say is, "I know you've been a judge for lots of years, you know? Can't really say anything better or whatever." You know, he's not, he's not lying. He's not saying anything that's false, but he can't think of anything good to say for it. It's kinda like somebody saying, "I know you've been governor for a couple of years now. Way to go being governor," you know? So he doesn't really have anything nice to say, but he's still being respectful. But it's kinda funny when you know the background and the kind of reputation that these Roman officials had. Felix was by no means as bad as like King Herod Agrippa II, who's mentioned later on. But nonetheless, it's kinda funny that we have this here, "Knowing that for many years you have been a judge over this nation." So Paul launches in here to defense, you know, using his usual sort of method. He basically says, "I didn't do any of this stuff that they're accusing me of. You know, I've tried to be a faithful Pharisee for many years and stuff." And, you know, they just are not at all happy with the fact that the way the church is growing by leaps and bounds and impacting, you know, the bottom line of the temple and that sort of thing too. And so Paul is becoming ever more powerful. And also, the church is becoming ever more influential in Jerusalem in particular at that time. And so they're out to get Paul because they really don't like him, but they see him as bad competition and they're trying to find some way to kill him, really, whether that's legally or not. So Felix, verse 22, "But Felix, who was rather well-informed about the way, adjourned the hearing with the comment, 'When Lysius the Tribune comes down, I will decide your case. Then he ordered the centurion to keep him in custody, but to let him have some liberty and not to prevent any of his friends from taking care of his needs.'" Okay, so basically Felix has just punted the ball down the field and said, "Okay, well, when Lysius the Tribune gets here, then I'll decide your case at that point." "So some days later, when Felix came with his wife Druella, who was Jewish, he sent for Paul and heard him speak concerning faith in Jesus Christ. And as he discussed justice, self-control, and the coming judgment, Felix became frightened and said, 'Go away for the present. When I have an opportunity, I'll send for you.' And at the same time, he hoped that money would be given him by Paul. For that reason, he used to send for him very often and converse with him. After two years had passed, Felix was succeeded by Porsches Festus. And since he wanted to grant the Jews a favor, Felix left Paul in prison." Okay, so here's where some of that secular history comes into play. Druella is, okay, well, let me back way up. Herod, you know, the guy who earlier on in Acts was eaten by worms' death, you know, bad Herod. That, his name was actually Herod Agrippa I is his, you know, full name. That's the guy when we think of Herod that is being spoken of. Now, Herod Agrippa II, who here in just a little bit, in a few chapters, is going to, he's going to be referred to as King Agrippa, okay? But his name is Herod Agrippa II. Now, Herod Agrippa II, his sister was Druella, who's married to Felix, the governor, okay? And she also had a reputation for being very loose with her morals. So Druella is not as bad as her other sister and Herod Agrippa II's other sister, whose name is Bernice, who we'll hear about some here in just a bit. But nonetheless, this whole family is just, it's just tabloid sort of stuff that's been happening with them. And so whenever Paul is here in front of these folks, Felix became frightened and said, "Go away for the present. When I have an opportunity, I'll send for you." He, the reason that he says that is because Paul is really, you know, calling him out basically with his morals because he's discussing justice, self-control, and the coming judgment. And Felix's like, "Okay, hitting a little too close to home here." So he sends Paul away. And we're told that he was basically just wanting to get a bribe from Paul, wanted Paul to give him some money so that, and then he would release him. And so he kept, you know, asking him to come up and talk to him and things like that. So he would call for him frequently in the hopes that Paul would give him some money. And Paul refuses to do anything like that. And so he's in jail for two years. And at that point, Felix was replaced by Porsches Festus, who oftentimes is just referred to as Festus. He wasn't quite as bad of a guy morally speaking as Felix was, but nonetheless, he's still very, Porsches Festus is still not really trying to judge Paul's case based on the merits or the evidence or anything like that. He's just playing politics. And he knows that he needs to keep the Jews happy and the Jews don't like Paul by and large. And so he's just keeping Paul in prison to get political favor with the Jews there. So chapter 25, let's go ahead and start with it. "Three days after Festus had arrived in the province, he went up from Caesarea to Jerusalem, where the chief priests and the leaders of the Jews gave him a report against Paul. They appealed to him and requested as a favor to them against Paul to have him transferred to Jerusalem. They were in fact planning an ambush to kill him along the way. Festus replied that Paul was being kept at Caesarea and that he himself intended to go there shortly. So he said, 'Let those of you who have the authority come down with me, and if there's anything wrong about the man, let them accuse him.'" And so so Festus here is, obviously, he's only been there a week or so, three days, and he's getting stuff done. He's not just letting Paul languish there in prison for two years, hoping that he gets a bribe, but nonetheless, he's still very politically minded about Paul and treating him as a pawn in a political game, more so than as a person and a human being and somebody who, you know, deserves justice. So he tells them to come up to Caesarea and accuse Paul there. So they do that. "After he had stayed among them not more than eight or 10 days, he went down to Caesarea. The next day, he took his seat on the tribunal and ordered Paul to be brought. And when he arrived, the Jews who had gone down from Jerusalem surrounded him, bringing many serious charges against him, which they could not prove. Paul said in his defense, 'I have in no way committed an offense against the law of the Jews, or against the temple, or against the emperor. But Festus, wishing to do the Jews a favor, asked Paul, 'Do you wish to go up to Jerusalem and be tried there before me on these charges?'" Okay, so let's stop right there because what Festus is doing at this point is basically if he says to Paul, "Okay, well, do you want to go down to Jerusalem and have a trial?" Well, Paul knows he's going to be ambushed and killed if he, you know, gets anywhere close to Jerusalem right now with all that was happening to him. And so as a Roman citizen, he had the authority to appeal to the emperor. Like I said many times in the course of this study, most people were not Roman citizens. It was a big deal to be a Roman citizen. And as such, as a Roman citizen, you could appeal to the emperor if there was something that was happening that in local courts and authorities, if they were treating a Roman citizen unjustly, then you could appeal directly to the emperor. And so that's what Paul decides to do. "Paul said, 'I'm appealing to the emperor's tribunal. This is where I should be tried. I've done no wrong to the Jews, as you very well know. Now, if I am in the wrong and have committed something for which I deserve to die, I'm not trying to escape death, but if there's nothing to their charges against me, no one can turn me over to them. I appeal to the emperor.'" Then Festus, after he had conferred with his counsel, replied, "You have appealed to the emperor. To the emperor, you will go." So Paul, in this, this is unlike anything we have here in the U.S. in terms of the justice system. Paul basically is in, you know, small-town court and says, "I appeal directly to the Supreme Court and the president," sort of thing. So he gets to go straight to the emperor with this. I mean, it's not easy to go straight to the emperor because you gotta go across half the Middle East, half the Mediterranean world to get there, you know? So this winds up taking quite a while. But so we have this happening now, so Paul says, "Rather than have a trial in Jerusalem, he appeals to the emperor." So let me get us back to where we are with Festus and King Herod Agrippa II. After several days had passed, King Agrippa, so this is Herod's son and Bernice, his sister/wife. Yeah. So this, this is like crazy stuff here. So King Herod Agrippa II and Bernice, that's his sister. But everybody knew that he and his sister were, you know, going at it. This was well-known through, I mean, all sorts of people in the Roman world, in the secular history have written about this stuff and how Agrippa and Bernice were, you know, romantically involved, even though she was his sister. And so right here with this, with Festus, Felix, you'll remember back, who had been the governor, was married to Druella, who was Bernice's aunt, Herod II, King Agrippa, were their siblings, all of them. And so, you know, it's a fairly tight-knit sort of group and not a lot of people. It's all a lot of crazy royal family stuff happening there. "And so after several days had passed, King Agrippa and Bernice arrived at Caesarea to welcome Festus. Since they were staying there several days, Festus laid Paul's case before the king, saying, 'There's a man here who was left in prison by Felix. When I was in Jerusalem, the chief priests and the elders of the Jews informed me about him and asked for a sentence against him. I told them that it wasn't the custom of the Romans to hand over anyone before the accused had met the accusers face to face and had been given an opportunity to make an offense against the charge. So when they met here, I lost no time, but on the next day, he took my seat on the tribunal and ordered the man to be brought. When the accuser stood up, they did not charge him with any of the crimes that I was expecting. Instead, they had certain points of disagreement with him about their own religion and about a certain Jesus who had died, but whom Paul asserted to be alive. Since I was at a loss how to investigate these questions, I asked whether he wished to go to Jerusalem and be tried there on these charges. But when Paul had appealed to be kept in custody for the decision of his imperial majesty, of the emperor, I ordered him to be held until I could send him to the emperor. Agrippa said to Festus, 'I would like to hear the man myself. Tomorrow,' he said, 'you'll hear him.'" So the emperor at this time, Paul's in a bad situation here. He has to appeal to the emperor in order to get any sort of justice, but the emperor at this time was Nero. He's really unlikely to get much justice from Nero. Nero was just kinda the embodiment of all this craziness. So we have this, and so Paul is being kept in prison as kind of a circus sideshow curiosity type thing. And so so Festus is using Paul to amuse his guests, basically, with Herod Agrippa II. So let's see, let's, have you ever heard that song, Martha, by Ray Stevens, "I'm My Own Grandpa"?
Yeah.
I love that one. But this is kind of one of those things because as I said before, King Herod Agrippa II, Herod's son, King Agrippa here, is hanging out with his sister. And Druella is also in this mix too. But I want to tell you a little more about Bernice. Bernice, Herod Agrippa's sister, who he's sweet on, was first married to a Jewish official in Alexandria, and then she was married to her own uncle. And when her uncle died, she went to live with her brother. And eventually, to quell incest rumors, she married the king of Cilicia. Okay, so she had been shackled up with her brother. And there are all these rumors circulating that, you know, brother and sister are more than just brother and sister. And so she gets married off to the king of Cilicia, but she quickly leaves him and returns to her brother. So after the events that are talked about here, but before Luke actually writes this down, so we're in that like time in the middle of the first century. And so the events that we're talking about here in Acts didn't get recorded until, you know, probably two decades or so after it happened. So in between, after the events here have happened, but before Luke actually starts writing down Luke Acts, she had another romantic interest, Bernice did, and that was to Titus, who was the son of the emperor. And so she was Titus's lover for a while, but then when Titus became emperor, he decided to dump her. And so she went back to her brother.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, you can't make this stuff up, you know? So anyway, these are the people who Paul is being brought in front of to talk to about stuff. And so he appeals to the emperor, but he wants to hear from him. And so he says, let's see, so on the next day, verse 23, "So on the next day, Agrippa and Bernice came with great pomp, and they entered the audience hall with the military tribunes and the prominent men of the city. Then Festus gave the order, and Paul was brought in. Festus said, 'King Agrippa, and all here present with us, you see this man about whom the whole Jewish community petitioned me, both in Jerusalem and here, shouting that he ought not to live any longer. But I found that he's done nothing deserving death, and when he appealed to his imperial majesty, I decided to send him. But I have nothing definite to write to our sovereign about him. Therefore, I have brought him before all of you, and especially before you, King Agrippa, so that after we've examined him, I may have something to write. For it seems to me unreasonable to send a prisoner without indicating the charges against him.'" Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. "So Agrippa says to Paul, 'You have permission to speak for yourself.'" So then Paul stretches out his hand and begins to defend himself. He says, "I consider myself fortunate that it's before you, King Agrippa, that I am to make my defense today against all the accusations of the Jews, because you are especially familiar with all the customs and controversies of the Jews." I find this part just to be hilariously funny. Let me stop sharing my screen here for a moment. And so what I think is really funny about this is Paul is talking to this guy who is so famously licentious and morally loose and is shacking up with his own sister, who just has no morals either. And so anyway, he says, "I consider myself fortunate that it's before you, King Agrippa, that I make my defense today against..." against all the accusations of the Jews, because you're especially familiar with all the customs and controversies." Well, he's especially familiar with them only in that he knows every one of them because he's broken all of them. You know, it'd be like somebody telling Mike Tyson that they were glad that he's there because he's familiar with pacifism, you know? But even so, Paul still treats Agrippa with respect. And he even tries to offer him a word about his own conversion and attempts to entice him and the other people that are there in that audience to change, just like he did. I mean, he's talking about his history and how he originally started out persecuting Christians. And then, you know, he talks about his Damascus Road experience. And so down here in verse 19, "After that, King Agrippa, I was not disobedient to the heavenly vision, but declared first to those in Damascus, and then in Jerusalem and throughout the countryside of Judea, and also to the Gentiles, that they should repent and turn to God and do deeds consistent with repentance. For this reason, the Jews seized me in the temple and tried to kill me. To this day, I've had help from God, and so I stand here testifying to both small and great, saying nothing but what the prophets and Moses said would take place, that the Messiah must suffer, and that by being the first to rise from the dead, he would proclaim light both to our people and to the Gentiles." And now this part is really kind of funny because while he was making this defense, Festus exclaimed, "You're out of your mind, Paul. Too much learning is driving you insane." But Paul said, "I'm not out of my mind, most excellent Festus, but I am speaking the sober truth. Indeed, the king knows about these things, and to him I speak freely, for I'm certain that none of the things has escaped his notice. This was not done in a corner. King Agrippa, do you believe the prophets? I know that you believe." I mean, isn't it just so funny when you know that Agrippa, who he was and what his lifestyle was like? Paul's words take on a different tone entirely, don't they? I mean, he's being kind of sarcastic almost and all that. But he's still being respectful. And so Agrippa said to Paul, "Are you so quickly persuading me to become a Christian?" Paul replied, "Whether quickly or not, I pray to God that not only you, but also all who are listening to me today might become such as I am, except for these chains." Then the king got up, and with him the governor and Bernice and those who had been seated with them. And as they were leaving, they said to one another, "This man is doing nothing to deserve death or imprisonment." Agrippa said to Festus, "This man could have been set free if he had not appealed to the emperor." So anyway, we get a sense here, it's possible to get a sense from reading the English translations of this story that Agrippa is like almost convinced that he's wanting to become a Christian too. But if you read the Greek, it's really kind of Agrippa mocking Paul more so than agreeing with him, kind of like saying, "With your arguments, you almost make me look like a Christian," you know? Like that sort of thing. It's hard to translate it properly, but that's really kind of what's going on here. So they're getting ready to send Paul to Italy, to Rome, to appeal to the emperor for an audience with Nero. So this is coming up, this next part is the first part of the travel story there, and it's about halfway. The problem is in Paul appealing to the emperor. It's not, like, the only way to travel by boat is by sailboat, you know? And because there's no engines or anything like that at this point, and so you had to sail everywhere. And there's a problem with sailing, and that is if the wind, if you're wanting to sail westward and the wind is coming from the west, it's kind of hard to make that boat go west. You know, because the wind's wanting it to go east. Now, you can do what's called tacking, where you kind of go zigzag a little bit, and you can get a little bit of that going that way. But if the winds are contrary, and there's no other way for you to go, it's hard to go by boat anywhere. And so at certain points in the year, particularly in the winter months, it's the wind that comes from the west in the Mediterranean is really, really strong typically. And so if you're wanting to travel from Jerusalem or Caesarea or wherever, you know, if you're wanting to travel from somewhere on that eastern coast of, well, the western coast of Israel and Lebanon, that sort of area, if you're wanting to travel towards Rome, you can't do it in the winter, basically. Or it gets a lot harder in the winter, too. So that's what they're going to be up against here once they get on a boat and start sailing that way. So when it was decided that we were to sail for Italy, they transferred Paul and some other prisoners to a centurion of the Augustan cohort named Julius. So the Augustan cohort, it was a group of special soldiers who only did very special things. So it'd be kind of almost like a U.S. marshal or an FBI agent or something like that. So he's got his own personal agent that he's handcuffed to throughout all this. And so, I mean, Paul's a pretty important person in that sense. And so they embark on a ship of Adramidium that was about to set sail to the ports along the coast of Asia. And we put to sea accompanied by Aristarchus, a Macedonian from Thessalonica. The next day, we put in at Sidon, and Julius treated Paul kindly and allowed him to go to his friends to be cared for. Putting out to sea from there, we sailed under the lee of Cyprus, because the winds were against us. After we had sailed across the sea, that's off of Cilicia and Pamphlia, we came to Myra in Lycia. There, the centurion found an Alexandrian ship bound for Italy and put us on board. So I'm going to share my screen again, and this time, I'm, oh, hold on just a second. It's not letting me share what I want to. All right, let's see if it'll do it now. There we go. All right, can you see this map? So he was here in Caesarea, and they first, once he's under the care of Julius, the centurion from the Augustan cohort, then he goes here to Sidon, where Julius lets Paul's friends take care of him, you know? And he's probably hanging out with them too. And so you would think that you would go, like, straight from here and go, you know, like, around this way maybe to get to Rome, straight line? But that's not what most of the ships would do. Most, can you see my pointer?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if the pointer was showing up or not. But so if you're coming from Caesarea and going here, you stay kind of close to the coast. And especially if the wind is, like, over here where Crete is, where they get to eventually. If the winds are coming from the west like this, and your ship's over here, then the island can give you some blockage of that wind that's coming that way. And the current is kind of moving westward as well. So even though you got this wind coming from the west, the current's kind of going the other way. And so if you hang right here, close to the island of Crete and stuff, you can kind of make up for the fact that the wind's often against you as far as the sailing goes, and you can get along a little better. So that's what they're doing here. But when they get to Myra, they get on an Alexandrian ship bound for Italy because likely what was happening was, so Alexandria is down here. And so probably what happened was the ship that they got on in Caesarea that was making its way up to here was going to go like this, you know, up the coast of what we would call Turkey, instead of going on through Crete and up to Italy. And so they get another ship that's going to take them to Italy from there. So they, kind of a layover, so to speak. And they're going, and they sail past Salomon, and they get over this way, and they make it to, sailing past it with difficulty, we came to a place, I'm on verse eight. "We came to a place called Fair Havens, near the city of Lysia. Since much time had been lost, and sailing was now dangerous, because even the fast had already gone by." It's later on in the fall. And quickly turning to winter, and, you know, the winds get worse as the winter months come in. "Paul advised them, saying, 'Sirs, I can see that the voyage will be with danger and much heavy loss, not only of the cargo and the ship, but also of our lives. But the centurion paid more attention to the pilot and to the owner of the ship than to what Paul said.'" So they're having great difficulty with this journey. It's not been an easy one for them already to get down here to Lysia, here on the southern coast of Crete, but in Fair Havens. And that port, the bay that's there at Fair Havens, it was exposed to the wind. It wasn't a very good bay, but it was a bay enough to where if you're, you know, it's kind of like if you're on a road trip and you gotta go to the bathroom really badly, you'll go in some pretty seedy-looking places. Kind of like that. It's like, it's not the best bathroom there at Fair Havens, despite its name. And so what they would have to do is just park the ship in the bay until it got springtime, because they couldn't go anywhere. And so they're trying to decide if that's what they're going to do or if they're going to risk it a little more and get up here to Phoenix, which is about 40 miles away from Fair Havens. Paul says he doesn't think that that's a very good idea at all for them to try to make that, even though Phoenix had a good bay. That was, it was a better spot to try to winter over than Fair Havens was. But the sailing was so dangerous at that point, he didn't think they should go. However, the owner of the ship and the pilot, and also Julius, decided that's what they would do. Now, this ship, I'm trying to, it had about 276 people on it. So, I mean, this is not a small group of folks here. So anyway, they try to make it, since the harbor was not suitable for spending the winter, the majority was in favor of putting to sea from there on the chance that somehow they could reach Phoenix, where they could spend the winter. It was a harbor of Crete facing southwest and northwest. So what that means is it was protected from the winds. So the ship, if it's just hanging out on the ocean, you know, in the bay, it's not going to be in danger of capsizing or sinking or whatever. It's going to be nice and protected from all the winds, and it's going to be, you know, in a lot safer spot than if they stay there in Fair Havens, because Fair Havens wasn't protected from the wind. So the ship would have been in more danger. And so there's a lot of, it's really interesting how much sailing comes into the study of the Bible right here at this point, you know? And so they, that's basically what they do. The, right now, we still see some of this happening even in our own time because particularly the countries of northern Africa, you've probably heard on the news about all the immigrants fleeing from war-torn places in Africa, and particularly in North Africa, and trying to get to Greece and Italy on rafts, on whatever, you know? And whole shiploads of people being picked up and, you know, just trying to get to an EU country where they have a better chance at, you know, life. And, but in the winter months, nobody really tries to do it because it's just the seas are that rough. And so it picks up in the summer months in particular. So we see some of the same stuff still happening with regards to traveling on the ocean. But it's not a safe thing to really do back in this day, and it was an expensive thing because it could cost you a ship, it could cost you your cargo because you'd throw the cargo over to lighten the ship to make it, you know, not as, in as much danger of sinking. And so anyway, they, whenever they leave Fair Havens, they encounter a storm. This is in our passages for next time. But they encounter a storm, and it's not at all good. And they finally end up wrecking on Malta over here, just right below Sicily. And so we'll hear about some of that and about the last thing we hear of Paul in the book of Acts and the last bit of Acts next time. But I, I was trying to think where I was. There was, seemed like there was something else I was wanting to cover. Oh, so there was a, let me stop sharing the screen so I can look at you a little better, Martha. So one of the things that I always find interesting is, this was a big debate, you know? Paul was saying, "We need to stay." And the shipowner and the pilot and Julius said, "We should go for it." And so it brings up certain things about, what do you do with controversial subjects, you know? Like, we have those in our own time. It's not about whether or not to, you know, go try to sail to Phoenix, which just sounds funny since Phoenix is in Arizona over here, you know? But it's not about sailing to Phoenix, but there's all sorts of hot-button issues that come up in our time, whether it's, you know, the racial stuff now that's really coming to a head, the Confederate statue in Salisbury, the issue of human sexuality and how to interpret that in the church. I mean, that's big for Methodist right now. And, you know, there's always some very controversial topic. And Justo Gonzalez, who has written a nice book on Acts called Three Months With the Spirit, I really like it a lot. He has a lot of great things to say in that one. And so that's one of the commentaries that I consult quite a bit. But he says anytime there's a big issue like that, to take a sheet of paper and draw three columns on it and write the problem up at the top of the page, and write on the first column, one side, you know, whatever it is. And then on the second column, write the other side. So it always seems like he, in his example, he's talking about tobacco and how back in the day, you know, doctors were saying on this one side, tobacco will give you cancer, it's bad, you shouldn't do it. And then the doctors that were in the till of the big tobacco companies were saying, "Oh, no, that's not proven, you know? You can't say that. Tobacco's just fine for you, don't worry about that stuff." So you got one side, and then you got the other side. So those two columns. And then on the third column, to write Christian values. And in thinking about any sort of controversial topic, like listing them out as what this one side says, what the other side says, and what Christian values are that relate to this. And then going back and looking at that issue again after having written those Christian values down right next to it, to see like, he says that that's often a way to get a better insight into what the Christian perspective on some of this could be or maybe should be. And, you know, so it's like, well, is this causing harm to someone else? Taking the tobacco thing, or harming myself, you know? The body's the temple, right? So we could put that one in there on Christian values and not harming other people, you know? Love your neighbor as yourself, that could go in there. And so you could... And so you could, uh, look at that, and then going back over here to, you know, the one side and the other side stuff, um, it might make us look at the, the subject a little differently. "Oh, well, is it possible that by my smoking three packs a day, that I'm gonna, uh, the secondhand smoke's gonna give my granddaughter cancer, you know? And maybe I shouldn't do that around her." You know, like stuff like that. But I, I, I thought that was an interesting way to look at controversial things. And something that, that I'm gonna try some, um, you know, here in, here in a while and in the future, just to, um, just as an exercise to kind of get your mind in the right spot. Because oftentimes, we're not thinking about controversial subjects from a Christian perspective. We're thinking about it from, you know, a, a political perspective, or we're thinking about it from a personal perspective. But to, to bring scripture into it, um, and to bring Christian values into it, can sometimes change the way that we look at those things. So I always try to keep an open mind with stuff. It drives my wife crazy because she's like, "I just wanna know how, where you stand on something." And I'm like, "Well, you got this over here to say this, and then you, but you got this over here." And she's like, "I don't wanna know the pros and cons of it all, I wanna know what you think." It's like, "Well, I don't know, we got this over here and this," you know? So I, um, I always try to keep an open mind as much as I can. But, so I'll offer that to, to you and to folks who are, will be watching this, uh, the recording of it later on. Do you have any questions or comments or anything like that, Martha?
No, I, I think it's, it's interesting how his life paralleled with Christ a lot. It seemed like, and no matter what he did, they found fault with it.
Yeah, it's also interesting, I think, that no matter what situation he finds himself in, he finds a way to give a sermon. You know, like even when he's in front of, of Herod's son, he's trying to, to convince him that Jesus is the Messiah and that, uh, he should repent, you know? I, I think that's a, an interesting thing with Paul too. Well, um, I don't have anything else. We'll, uh, pick up next time, uh, next Wednesday at 3:00 PM for the live thing for Zoom with our last, uh, week for week 12. We'll be covering Acts 27 13 through 28 30, which is the end of the book.
Okay.
And, um, so I'll probably go rather quickly through that so that we can have some, some time at the end to, to process the whole book and to, to think about big things that are there in the book and, and how we can apply those to our lives now. But thank you for being here, Martha.
Thank you.
Hope you all have a nice time at, at, uh, beach and stay safe.
Okay, thank you.
See ya.
Okay, bye-bye.